Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The clock in the council chambers is slow, but it's actually 7:00 PM. So we're going to start the meeting. It is Tuesday, or excuse me, it's Wednesday because of the election, Wednesday, August 14th, at 7:00 PM. And I'm calling to order this meeting of the Richfield City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have talked about our open forum policy, and it is, has been pointed out that it's kind of redundant to sign in if you've already filled out a form. So if you've already filled out a form, you don't have to sign in at the sign-in sheet. We'll save some time. But please do state your name and your address when you're giving your presentation. You have three minutes. I believe there's no one online, if I'm reading this correctly. So we're going to start off with Larry Earnster.
Testing, testing?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Larry Earnster. I live at 6727 Elliott Avenue South. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. At the July 7th City Council meeting, I stated that it appears that Richfield is changing ordinances to isolate itself from its citizens. I used examples of rezoning our single-family homes, eliminating the one acre minimum on PUDs, and writing ordinances on micro-communities, AKA homeless shelters, to explicitly eliminate contact with citizens. To quote Staff Report Number 156 from the November meeting, "to avoid frustrating and pointless public hearing process." If Richfield had to implement the state ordinance on micro-units, it did not have to go the extra step to shield itself from citizens who want to use this frustrating and pointless public hearing process. But let's review if Richfield was required to implement the state ordinance. According to Minnesota Statute, Chapter 410, there are two kinds of charter cities: statutory cities and home-ruled cities. Richfield is a home-ruled charter city. Chapter 410 says, "In any law," and let me repeat that, "in any law implemented or adopted after July 1976, the word 'city,' when used without further description, extending the application of the term to home-ruled charter city, means statutory cities only." This means that since 1976, if the state law does not specifically mention home-ruled charter cities, home-ruled cities do not need to comply with the law. Even if the law refers to all cities, "all cities" refers to statutory cities, not Richfield. This makes sense when you think about it. Richfield can set its own laws. Didn't we just change our speed limit on our city streets? So back to micro-units. I searched the state statutes and cannot find any wording that explicitly says that the state's micro-unit statute applies to home-ruled cities. Maybe there is another section that supersedes Chapter 410, but I can't find it. And that is my question. What documentation is there that state-level ordinance 327.30 for sacred communities and micro-units specifically applies to home-ruled cities, and that Richfield was required to adopt it? I'm also requesting that when any future state ordinances are brought forward, that the staff include documentation that home-ruled cities are required to comply. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Best.
My name is Mary Best, and I also live at 6727 Elliott. Good evening, everyone. One of the most often-stated goals of the City Council is affordable housing. Since we're talking about supportive housing, like micro-units, Richfield has three more developments for supportive housing in our city. Astor Commons at 66 in Portland, this is an agreement between Beacon Interfaith Housing for a development of 38 units of supporting housing for neurodiverse individuals. The city of Richfield owns those lots. There are four of them. Richfield Flats, AKA Penn Station, at 65th and Penn, 40 units of affordable housing for livable communities pre-development. It's another grant, five lots. MICC Compound, 75th and Morgan, this is 24 units of housing for Minnesota Independence College and Community, a nonprofit vocational and life skills training program for autistic and neurodivergent adults, five more lots. Those three supportive housing developments alone require 14 buildable lots and substantial grant money from Richfield. My questions are, after they're built, which ones will be paying property taxes? Which ones will require additional taxpayer support and assistance? How much support? And how is that additional taxpayer support going to be budgeted and generated? By the way, when looking at the plans for the MICC, I noticed that the 2040 plan intends to rezone 33 more family homes around the MICC. All the single-family homes between Logan and Newton Avenue and between 75th and 76th Street. When will the residents in that neighborhood be advised of your plans? The American dream is still to own our own home. A home produces generational wealth and comes with a backyard for kids to play and a garden to grow. By destroying those 33 single-family homes, you eliminate 33 opportunities for a family to enjoy a home of their own. If single-family homes were vacant or unsellable, it might make sense. But that is not the case in Richfield. Homes sell easily. Why diminish their value by rezoning and destroying the neighborhood so that some developer can buy them at a fire sale price? Richfield is a community of single-family homes. We homeowners pay the majority of the taxes in Richfield. I read on the Richfield Budget website that 70% of the operating funds coming to Richfield are from property taxes, my property taxes. I feel like I am subsidizing all of the grant projects our City Council and city managers are authorizing. I will be happier when I see my taxes go down, or at least remain the same. As my City Council members, that should be your goal, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And... Oh, if you could give them to the staff, please. Thank you. All right, and next we have Kathleen Balaban.
I had a couple of things that I was going to speak to, but I had the privilege of coming to your workshop. So now I'm switching my speech. It won't take very long. One of the things that I've noticed, including tonight's agenda, I mentioned it the last time I was here, when I read it, it talks about all the wonderful things we're going to do and how we're going to do them, but we don't tell you or me the financial impact. Okay? Here we are again. You look at your agenda, you look at your consensus calendar. I don't have to tell you each and every one, but every one, it tells you, you go to the financial plan, and it's not there. Again, we were talking about the Fire Department, last time we talked about the Police Department, and we also have COLA and all the rest of this stuff, but there's no money in there. You guys are making decisions, and you're proving stuff with no financial impact information to you. And like tonight, we're talking about, real quickly, I don't mean to pick on one department, but I'm going to, but in your last meeting, everything is funded. We have a new city manager that came with some skill sets in housing, transportation, and funding. And we're getting our funding. We're getting a lot of it, and we've been getting it for quite some time. But we get percentages that we have to pay, and we're not building it into our budget. Tonight, I heard it for the first time, $89,000 is our responsibility. These are for safe routes to schools, okay? $89K is coming to us in 2025, $290,000 from another one, our commitment to a fund that we're getting, $10 million for another one. We're getting $21 million, but we're getting $10 million is our responsibility. Another one, $613,000 is our responsibility for the noise reduction wall. Where is this, you know, these are our responsibilities, and they're all piling up on us in any given tax year. I mean, come on. When we start looking at giving funds or getting funds from various grants, we never did that before, not that I can see, not at the level we're doing now. And we're not calculating the long-term expense. So let's look at that. I mean, when I looked at our budgets, in the next 10 years, we're going up $10 to $12 million. Look at our compensation. I mean, really, we're eight square miles, so many people here, and our compensation and our budget is just going nuts. When I looked at it a long time ago, without picking on any one department, Woodlake Nature Center, we dumped the funding for the task group for the organic drop-off. In other words, we were putting funding money in a general fund, and it was Woodlake Nature Center. Woodlake had nothing to do with organic trash pickup, absolutely nothing. But that money went into that general ledger. And I brought it to your attention, and you've taken care of it. But I don't know if every single fund has its own general ledger, and we can track it going forward. Every fund can be buried anywhere that that department wants it to be, unless we've defined it by now. I'm asking that every single fund that we get, wherever we get it from, stands alone in a general ledger so that you can tell whether or not we're actually meeting that need. We're not doing that, I don't think. So I'm asking us to really look at it. So thank you.
Thank you. Stealing from the city. Thank you. Did anybody else sign in online? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that's here? Thank you for everyone that contributed, and I'm going to pass these down to make sure that they get entered into the record, since we don't have the sign-in sheet now. All right, so we're going to move on from open forum. And our next item would be the approval of the minutes of the City Council work session of July 23rd, 2024, and the City Council meeting of July 23rd, 2024.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those two sets of minutes. Are there any questions, additions, changes? All right, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've approved the minutes. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I'd move approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the agenda. Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to the consent calendar. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, Item A, consider a resolution designating the city manager as the signing authority for the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Environmental review required as part of the HUD Economic Development Initiative grant in the amount of $3 million for the Woodlake Nature Center building project. Item B, consider a request for a conditional use permit and two buffer yard variances for an auto repair shop at 7524 Lyndale Avenue South. Item C, consider entering into a joint powers agreement for assessment services with Hennepin County. Item D, consider the approval of two engineering consultant pool agreements between the city and the selected engineering firms for routine professional engineering services for calendar years 2024 through 2025. Item E, consider the adoption of a resolution identifying the need for a livable communities demonstration account development grant and authorizing an application for grant funds on behalf of Astor Commons, development located at 6613 through 25 Portland Avenue. Item F, consider approval of an agreement between the city of Richfield and the Science Museum of Minnesota for professional services in the planning and design of interpretive exhibits for the new Woodlake Nature Center building. Item G, consider the approval of a resolution for reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of utility bonds to be issued by the city for the water system interconnect project. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I was at the Planning Commission, where it was discussed about the new business that's going in at 7424 Lyndale Avenue, Stall One Automotive, and I see that the owners are in the audience, so I just want to say, welcome to Richfield, we're glad you're going to be joining us. Also, I wanted to say thank you to Hennepin County. They decided they were going to, I believe, and City Manager Rodriguez can correct me if I'm wrong, going to take over the assessing for the whole county. And because of that, then they're not going to be charging us individually, so that was a significant savings to our budget, so.
That is correct, Mayor.
So it'll be funded through the county assessment, but it frees up the city assessment here. And I think the economy of scale ends up taking less money than it would have benefited been individually. So that is something that I do appreciate.
And Mayor, if I could just clarify, it also will be $300,000 savings for Richfield taxpayers.
Okay. Other questions? All right. So if there are no further questions or discussions, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, we have approved the consent agenda. Next, we're going to move on to item number four. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is to consider a resolution approving the contract for the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49 for the contract period of January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025. And city staff have completed labor negotiations with the Labor and Trades Local 49 Union, and the provisions of the 2024 to 2025 labor agreement cover all the employees in this union. The two-year contract provides the following: increase in clothing allowance from $600 to $500 effective January 1, 2024, and the increase of clothing allowance from $650 to $700 effective January 25. Working out the class, this class would shift $2 an hour over an individual's base wage, and currently employees are paid at the LT two-step, and that change provides for a consistent pay increase for all eligible employees. And I'm not going to read the rest of the memo, but I just wanted to bring it to... I have comments, but I wanted if staff had any other particular concerns before I made the motion.
We're available for questions.
Great, well then, I would move that we adopt a resolution approving the provisions of the 2024-2025 labor agreement with Labor and Trades Local 49 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions? Councilmember Troutman.
I just wanted to thank our leadership team for negotiating this, and also every time we have an opportunity to just say thank you to our staff for the incredible work that they're doing, and recognize that things like the cost of uniforms have gotten more expensive. And when people enjoy our city, a lot of times, it's our public work staff that they never meet, but are making our city enjoyable and livable. So I just wanted to say thank you to them as well.
So I would also like to add my thanks, because I know that it's a lot of work to go through all these negotiations, and I appreciate that. It was brought up earlier about financial impact, and so it's under the financial impact. It talks about the impact of wages are within the earlier estimates, and they're included in the revised 2024 and the 2025 proposed budgets. Can you give us an update on that? City Manager Rodriguez, or...
Just an update on...
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution approving the provisions of the 2024-2025 labor agreement with Labor Trades and Local 49 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved that labor agreement. Next, we'll move on to item number five. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thanks. This item is to consider approval of an agreement between city of Richfield and MA Mortenson Company for construction manager at risk services for the construction of a new Woodlake Nature Center building. Over the past four months, staff implemented a thorough RFQ and RFP process as outlined in state statute for the selection of a construction manager at risk. Five firms submitted qualifications for the RFQ, four were invited to submit for the RFP, and two were interviewed before final scoring took place. Mortenson Construction was the highest-scoring firm, showing a site-appropriate approach to the project, a strong team, and the ability to bring significant resources to support the project. They have also successfully completed similar projects and have experience working with HGA architects. I'll just make the motion now, and we can discuss. I would move that we authorize the mayor and city manager to finalize and execute a contract in the amount of $1,790,000 between the city of Richfield and MA Mortenson Company to perform construction manager at risk services for the construction of the new Woodlake Nature Center building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any more information from staff or questions? Councilmember Whalen.
I know the council's discussed it before, but just for anyone who is new to the topic, has not heard the term, if staff would be willing to define construction manager at risk and that process, that'd be helpful. Yes. The construction manager at risk process is a new process outlined in state statute, and what it does is it has the construction manager set a guaranteed maximum price for the project, that we won't pay more than, and they need to do the project within that amount. So it really reduces the risk for the city in terms of what the final cost for the building is. The process outlined in state statute requires us to do an RFQ and then an RFP in order to identify who the construction manager at risk could be, and it really says how the scoring should be done and what needs to be considered in terms of selecting the construction manager at risk. Does that... Yes, thank you.
So to follow up on that, the company that takes on that job is the one that's taking the risk, so if there's cost overruns, that they take on the financial hit, not the city? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. The other, I would add the other benefit to it is the construction manager is involved during the design process as well, so they're able to help identify and realize cost savings in the design with how the construction process takes place as well, which can also help to build more building for less cost as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? All right. All in favor of authorizing this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item number six. Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider a resolution adopting title and ballot language pertaining to a local option sales tax authorized by the Minnesota Legislature to be submitted for consideration to the voters of the city of Richfield at the general election on November 5th of 2024. The city of Richfield was granted the authority by the Minnesota Legislature in 2023 to bring a local option sales tax to Richfield voters in the following two years at a general election. The city attorney advised that the local option sales tax questions should go on the 2024 ballot as it is a general election. Ballot language for the local option sales tax questions must be approved by city council and submitted to Hennepin County 74 days prior to the election, which would be by Friday, August 23rd, 2024. Ballot language was initially reviewed by city council at the July 23rd work session. Staff made edits to the language based on council feedback, and it was subsequently reviewed by legal council and bond council. The updated language is reflected in the resolution, which is in the full packet for tonight's agenda. Staff have worked with RAP Strategies to develop the website, OurLegacyOurFuture.org, which provides information on the projects and the sales tax referendum. So I do have a question, but I will make the motion and start the conversation. So I would move to approve the resolution adopting title and ballot language pertaining to a local option sales tax authorized by the Minnesota Legislature to be submitted for consideration to the qualified voters of the city of Richfield at the general election on November 5th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now, you said you had a question?
Yes, I wanted to ask staff, I can, I think it's worth for folks who are listening, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but to at least summarize some of the conversation from the work session. I know, once the language is finalized, that people, as they're approaching time to vote, as always, they'll be able to view a sample ballot through the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. I was wondering if, whether on the Our Legacy, Our Future website or other places, will people be able to see the full ballot language that they should expect?
We'll research that. We, that website is paid by city funds, and so we can only educate on that website. So I want to make sure that we're not violating that, but we will, I think it's a great suggestion, and if we can do it, we'll put it on there.
Okay. I was just checking, and we already have a sub-page that's called, like, Vote, and includes the information about how to vote. I would think that would be an appropriate place to put... This is what you will actually see on your ballot.
Again, I think it's a great suggestion. I just have been running everything by our city attorney to make sure that we are careful with it.
And Mayor and council, I think my initial take on it is I think it's purely just factual, providing the information. It's not advocacy, so I think it's likely fine, but we can confirm that.
Thank you. And just as I said, I will summarize a bit, but for folks who are especially listening online, you can go online to the full packet. But the main things we clarified in the language, state law requires that the three separate projects be three separate questions, and the main thing we wanted to clarify is that whether one question or multiple, if at least one and any amount of questions were approved, the maximum... the maximum total sales tax by the city would be a half percent, and the maximum would be twenty years. That that doesn't stack if multiple questions were to be approved. But would encourage folks to look at the packet if you're curious about the exact language.
And I would add, I was approached by a resident before the meeting, and it was much the same conversation that we had at the work session to make sure that it was very clear that it wasn't going to be one and a half percent, that it actually can only go up to a half percent. It's not something that's going to stack up. And so in response to that, we had asked that to be clarified. And some of the changes that were made is it's listed at the top of all three questions, and it says, if multiple questions are approved, the maximum total sales tax by the city would be one-half of a percent with a maximum of twenty years. So it states it up there. It also states it below each individual question that you have to do them individually, but the maximum, even if you approve, whether you approve one, two, or three, is going to be the zero-point-five percent. And then it says, the city must terminate the tax earlier than twenty years if the amount received is sufficient to pay for project and financing costs. So that was added in two places, well, actually four, because there's three questions, but before all of them, and then after, because that was a question that was raised. But if it is legal, I do think it's really important to have the language for people to see it so they're educated on what they're voting for and to have those facts there. But I do want to thank council and staff for following through and clarifying that because this is much more clear than what we saw at the work session. Other questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Then we'll put the question before you. If you are in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say nay. All right, we have approved the resolution. Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, three peoples that were here spoke. And then one resident emailed concerns about the changes to the parking, reducing the parking minimums. Their concerns were discussed by council and staff as part of the decision to approve an ordinance changing parking regulations, which passed three-two later in the meeting. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to claims and payroll.
I would move claims and payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the claims and payroll. Moving on to hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The only announcement that I have is for the, with fall, we have school programs that are coming back, but also we have parks and rec programs. There are still parks and rec activities for especially grade schoolers in the fall. So if you don't have the capacity to make the full-time, or what feels like a full-time commitment for traveling sports, now is the time to be on the lookout, especially for soccer. If you enjoyed soccer in the summer, you can enjoy soccer in the fall here in Richfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I'm sure others will mention it too, but I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed our Night to United National Night Out a week ago. And just thank you to all the residents who take the time to organize those events, attend those events, and all the staff who spent their evening, you know, connecting with the community. I visited about five parties in my ward and talked a lot, had a lot of questions about the sales tax. And actually, it was news to a lot of people at those meetings.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, I'd like to give a hats off to the individuals that in, all over the city, in the different precincts that worked as election judges and election workers yesterday for the primaries. So they did a great job moving people in and out as quickly as they could. And it was a good turnout by every precinct.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I also was going to thank our election workers and also our city clerk for her work on that. And then just congratulate, I mean, from multiple levels of government, our Senator Amy Klobuchar in winning her primary, our Congresswoman Ilhan Omar in winning her primary, and then Walter Burke and Brett Sturza for advancing to the general for the Ward One city council position. So congrats to everyone, and a huge thank you to obviously all the workers, but also to everyone who ran. However you did, it's a big step to run for office.
Thank you. And I would also add, in addition to all those thanks, thanks to everybody who voted and participated because it's really important to exercise that right to vote. I also want to do a hats off and thank my fellow councilmembers. I was unable to be at the ribbon cutting for the skate park opening. I got there later on and got to see all the kids having fun, and it seemed like a really great event. So thank you, the, I believe it was Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and Councilmember Christensen, they were able to attend that. So thank you for cutting the ribbon. Thank you to everybody, the staff and everyone that worked on this. And a big shout out to the high school kids who first suggested the project. So it was fun to see that all come to fruition. Speaking of high school kids, and all students who are heading back to school. And so I just want to say best wishes to all the students, all the families, and all the faculty out there and all the staff in the schools as they start a new school year off. And I will echo the comments of Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. It was really fun to get out for Night to United and talk with people and see people. And we have another opportunity as a community to come together tomorrow from four to seven over by the band shell. We're going to have unity in the community. And so I would encourage people to take part in that event as well. All right. Hearing no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.